Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the Hudsonville Public Schools Board of Education regular meeting and I'd like to call it to order. And I'd like to go ahead and stand to the flag in their evening.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we're going to look at the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Dawn, do we have a second?
Support.
Joy, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Recognition of visitors in hearing of people present?
No one in person.
None? None? Okay. Uh, let's see, let's go to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Dawn? Farid? Okay. Do we have a second?
Support.
Nick? Any discussion? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Now we'll go to the regular, um, action agenda. And we're going to go to the organizational items here. And uh, let's see, we have the board meeting scheduled for twenty-five, twenty-six.
There has been a request to move the gym panel to be other dates that move based on circumstances up here, but we can do this now to move the July nine of twenty-twenty-six to July twenty-third of twenty-twenty-six. Move two weeks later, then send it over to the board. That's a request if we can move a motion. Show that the second is that, uh, we've been figuring some thoughts out.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the board meeting scheduled for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year with the change that Dr. Vanderjack just noted?
Support.
Andrew, do we have a second?
We have support.
Ken? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Now, for the bank depositors? Do we have a motion to approve the bank depositors for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year?
Support.
Okay, and then second?
Support.
Nick? Okay. Uh, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we're going to go to the legal firms for twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh, do we have a motion to approve the legal firms for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year?
So moved.
Dawn, do we have a second?
Support.
Farid? Any discussion?
Some group? Yes, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we'll go to the Ottawa Area School Board appointment. Do we have a motion to appoint a board member and an alter- alternative to represent HPS for the Ottawa Area School Board for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year?
Who wants to do it?
Well, I just want to say this, I was appointed last year and it canceled five out of the six meetings.
That's great.
So I, I want to go again.
All right, all right.
That's great, that's great.
All right. And I think you were my, my backup last.
Okay, sure.
Is he willing to serve in that? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
There's your recommendation, I had the motion.
That's right, okay, do we have a, do we have a motion to accept Greg and Andrew as the member and alternative?
So moved.
Okay, Dawn, do we have a second?
Support.
Joy? Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Okay. Admini- that's what's.
Nothing. They couldn't make the motion pass. First, second, third.
Administrative appointment for the Professional Development Committee for twenty-five, twenty-six. Do we have a motion to approve Matt Power and Amy Taylor, the Administrative PD Committee for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year?
I'll do that.
Nick, do we have a second?
Support.
Dawn? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next, we have the interim superintendent designation for twenty-five, twenty-six. We have a motion to approve the appointment of the Assistant Superintendent of Finance to serve as the interim superintendent in the event of Dr. Vanderjack's absence during the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
So moved.
Okay. Okay, so we had who was first? Farid and then Andrew. What's the second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I do have a question though, does that mean they shouldn't travel together like on a plane? I, just saying that.
I'm sure Pat's okay with that. Just question Pat when he's in the air.
Well, I think they shouldn't try to land in a small airport in, in West Michigan because we've had three, uh, man, it's been a couple of weeks here, so. Okay, professional memberships. Do we have a motion to approve the recommended professional membership for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year?
So moved.
Dawn? Do we have a second?
Support.
Nick? Any discussion? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have the school bond loan application. Do we have a motion to approve the school bond loan application as presented? Okay, Dawn?
Aye.
I'm going to have to get a mirror so I can see if there's any discussion. Okay, second? Do we have a second?
Support.
Okay, Andrew? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we come to a very, very, very important one. The Baldwin Street traffic light. Do we have a motion to approve the Baldwin Street traffic light proposed as presented?
You saw the presentation that Pat put together in there, just want to, you know, we have talked about this at length about Baldwin Street, the traffic light. Um, now that we've basically, the, the dollar mark's been fine tuned, we know exactly what's going to cost and split between Georgetown, which is like the work to take from action, and, um, it's almost up, but it would be, uh, that's the question.
I'll move to approve of them.
Okay.
I'll slide.
Ken? Joy? Any discussion?
Just say so we'll work on that. It's just a smart place to do it, it's a smart way to go about it, so thank you.
Safety fund or bond fund?
Yeah, we tried and tried for a sinking fund and our attorneys have said it's one of those whole bad decisions that the treasury's not willing to change their mind on. So we do have a bond fund. Uh, we, uh, we have a, an other capital projects fund, it's got about five hundred and forty thousand that is our recommendation, pay for it out of that money.
Okay, thank you.
There, there still could be safety grants that are awarded and we continue to look at, and if something else comes up, it could always be, still go towards it.
Okay.
People running around.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, all I go, Ken, appreciate all the work by several of people for many years. It's a great thing that maybe.
Well, of course, you're there as well.
Yeah. That is provided by the town chair, I guess. Not at thirty-six, but it'll be right after. Now, that crossing there will not be there after football games and, and off hours on a Sunday afternoon along the park, but after school.
Any more discussion? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now we have human resource items, and I'm going to turn that over to Ann.
Yes, uh, it's summer, so it's always an exciting time in human resources and we have a great group of young professionals to present to you today. Um, first, I would like to speak on behalf of Tim Petrollia. Tim is a, a current teacher in, well, not anymore, uh, but he did in Gole, he's social studies, but in, he was in college, he originally thought to be, um, like a accountant or a business major, and so he has all these business classes. And so, uh, with his hard work and, uh, some like sleuthing, uh, we know, we're very confident that, um, endorsement for business is going to be easy to get. And so we are recommending him for hire as a new business teacher, um, at Hudsonville High School. Uh, not present currently is Avery Ringel. Avery, uh, is from Hartland, Michigan, so she's still trying to get housing here, but she, um, went to Northern Michigan and then did her student teaching in Powell High School. And if you don't know this about me, that's where I got it. And so it was really fun when I saw in our social studies, so when I saw who she student taught under, I was calling my friends like crazy and they just couldn't say enough great things about her, so that was really exciting. So Avery is recommended for social studies at Baldwin, uh, Street Middle School. Then we have Haley, uh, Teesman, and Haley, you might recognize her because she is a Hudsonville grad and she just had such amazing things to say about her art experiences here in Hudsonville Public Schools, but then also she's grown as such an artist, um, with Grand Valley, and then she did her student teaching at West Ottawa in Stein, you know, um, when I was doing screenings, uh, her mentor teacher also was, um, possibly looking at coming to Hudsonville. And she, the mentor teacher, as she, I was interviewing her, it was like, but you have to hire. So it was just so awesome, I just love that so much. So we're recommending her to be a, uh, elementary specialist with her home building at South. Uh, obviously she'll be at other buildings. Uh, then we have Mary Ben Beist, and Mary, um, also, uh, she has been around as a, as a substitute teacher, she did a long-term subbing position at Bauer where everyone was calling and saying like, you have to hire her. And, uh, when she did her demo, she did this really amazing lesson, I learned tons about it in the history of this Japanese artistry, uh, and kids got to play fish, which is really, really cool. And so we're just really excited for her to take on arts with her home base, again, art specialist at elementary, but her home base will be all word elementary. Um, then, uh, we have Kaylee Vennels, and Kaylee, uh, is coming to us, um, I'm recommending for social work here in the, um, district. Uh, one of the things that we just really stood out about, uh, Kaylee was that she can really handle multiple things with empathy. Um, she played college soccer and was able to be a college athlete as well as managing classes, and then she went back and got a full-time job and then went back to work, and, uh, she worked as a hospice social worker. So she knows how to do difficult things and see them through, and we're just really excited for her to work with kids. Um, then we have Dan Campbell. Can you find him? From the Lions. Guys get so old, so I don't know. Uh, but Dan, we're recommending for hire as a PE teacher at, uh, PE help teacher at the high school. Uh, I will tell you that every single reference, every single person that we kind of knew because Dan's coming from Hope College and did some para work in, um, Holland Public, they, every single person said he's the nicest person you will ever meet. And like, of course we want to run with his, you know, and it has, it has shown as we met him, he also is cousins to another new hire, um, which, uh, I'll let him, uh, tell you about that at dinner. See? Ooh, something that you have to learn about him. Uh, but you'll, you'll love that. And, um, so we're really, really excited to get Dan. Um, not here currently, because again, out of state candidate that is still looking for housing is, um, Sean. You want to take a guess?
Hi.
Burglum. So Sean is, um, coming to us from Grand Valley and he, uh, did an amazing demo with our eighth grade students at Riley Middle School for social studies. And, um, I learned a lot about the Grand River as well, and it was just really, really an exciting lesson because it was geography focused and that it was just good stuff. So, I'm very excited to get Sean. And then, um, Kimberly Schwack, whom you might recognize because she, um, is a, has been a para for us at Bauer Elementary. She also did some long-term subbing for us in the ASD room, we know she can handle difficult situations. Uh, she's going to work with our littles as a pre-PE teacher at Bauer Elementary. So great group of educators, we're very excited to get them in front of our, um, students and, uh, these are my recommendations to support.
And Dan, for the first time in seventy years, someone is excited to meet the coach of the Lions. This doesn't matter.
I'm honored.
Dan does coach, he coaches, uh, well, I think you do, right?
Yes.
This is a good, uh, uh, for cross-country, so really good cross-country.
Yeah, you gotta think, like, you're putting that name down on our resume.
At least for now.
Yeah. I was thinking your job at Applebee's might be kind of tough to do this stuff.
So do we have a motion to approve the new hire recommendations as designed?
So moved.
Andrew?
Support.
Farid? Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you're hired. And now we have another administrative hire, and I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Vanderjack.
So as you know, uh, when, uh, Mr. Gillette retired, uh, Mr. Shemansky is going over for us, oh, we had a, uh, a fair thing of all the high school, the post-issues and Joe Shemansky left as the senior assistant principals. Um, but we're very confident, very excited to welcome Joe Kessel, another Joe, um, to take over as assistant principal. His understanding of the high school has been on hold as his role as a counselor, um, just to watch him work with kids. It's a different side of the coin that he now gets to spend time on, so when the kids would see a good cop, bad cop, now, um, he gets to know it like through both ends of that, so. Uh, Joe will be coming to us and starting assistant principal at high school, working with Mr. Beal and the staff, and I, I speak on behalf, and I know Mr. Anderson's here, there's a large number, not all the high school staff, that anybody I've spoken to is like very excited to welcome him. We're in the process of just finishing up the, the, filling his role as counselor and that will come in our next future meeting in early August to welcome him. So, um, our recommendation is to hire Joe Kessel, Dr. Kessel, as assistant principal advancing.
I can't say that one of the current board members was not as excited to have you leave because her son had you as a counselor.
Yes. You're fantastic, so I told, yeah, I told Dr. Vanderjack I was sad but thrilled.
And then you recently had a child?
Yeah, June twenty-eighth, uh, baby Bernard, call him Benji.
That's your first?
That's our second.
Second, okay, well, congratulations.
I am, sleeping all night already.
The baby or no?
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the hire of Joe Kessel as assistant high school principal?
I'll move that.
Nick?
Support.
Dawn? Any discussion? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And now we're going to go to the discussion area.
So I will just remind the board, uh, August fourteen.
Little, yeah.
Dinner.
Fourteen?
Twelve.
Twelve, it was twelve.
Twelve, fourteenth, fourteenth. On August twenty, twelve, uh, we have the, the new staff dinner, where you get a chance to spend some time with our new staff. You'll see, uh, Dr. Kessel will be there also, but then get a chance to meet them and ask them all sorts of questions. I will, I will selfishly say that there was an opportunity for me to sit in on at least the, the health and PE, um, interviews that Dan was in, uh, and it was so fun to watch. We got some great hires, and it's just very exciting to see our kids coming back in about, uh, a little over a month and to see them work with, uh, some teachers that care dearly, dearly for our kids all across the board, even the assistant principals care dearly and care for our kids and everything, so. As a term of the, uh, the My Student Voice survey, I do just want, I just want to say that we're going to talk about a number of things. Um, our administrative staff has not had a chance to really dive into this data yet, we'll do that in August. Um, so this is really just a thirty-thousand-foot view for the board to talk about it, there'll be more conversations regarding this data and what the access looks like, and then, um, it's kind of a long story, but as the first year of doing this, we don't have a really to rely on every other district in Ottawa County. Technically, we're the only full Ottawa County district that administered this, being the first year of survey, the volume participation, I think Mrs. Taylor's going to talk a little bit about that, um, but then, uh, see what that looks like moving forward. We have our SOAR survey that we administer every three years, which will be coming up again next year. So we're looking at how to get additional information that'll continue the school improvement process that we use. So, um, a lot of this data is, is not used for like district level strategic planning, but it's used from a building level and district level continuous improvement when it comes to academics. So I'll turn it over to Mrs. Taylor, and I've got a great support team now, I won't talk about Mrs. Ballhaus quite yet, but I will, yeah, I will.
Okay. So, uh, boy, I'm trying to think of additional details to add on to what Dr. Vanderjack already shared. Uh, it's a relatively new, new survey across the state, it's in the fourth year across the state. Uh, in two thousand twenty-two, there were twenty-two districts, this year there were a hundred and twenty-seven, so it's growing in popularity, um, really in that vein of climate and culture, if you will, and belonging, and we'll get into some of that in a moment, and you see that certainly in the ANCA report that was attached to your board packet. Uh, and from a comparable standpoint, we're still diving into, uh, how we may be able to use the data, again, because it's relatively new, we certainly want to use it for our own district improvement and school improvement processes, which, again, we'll dive into in August when our administrators return, as we seek to finalize goals for the close academic school year in that way. And so I'll turn it over to Lindsay Ballhaus, who has, um, really been leading a lot of our district improvement work and, um, and really facilitated the AOT implementation of the survey, it's all in the memory there.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so just kind of an overview, the surveys were conducted in April twenty-eighth, and Hudsonville chose to be major in all three surveys, so a survey went to all educators and district teachers, parents, everybody, um, parents and guardians and students fifth through twelfth grade. Um, the reports that you have in your packet are the ANCA reports. The ANCA questions are designed to triangulate perspectives, so taking that data and comparing and contrasting across the three groups who participated. Um, and like, um, as Taylor said, they reflect key dimensions of school climate connection, belonging, respect, fairness, safety, inclusion, and cultural reasons. So data from the ANCA report as well as building level reports will be used, um, again, like Katie said, in our August admin work, um, as we start digging into what our school improvements might be for next school year. So this like, um, I think, I'm not sure if you've seen this before, this is our participation data for the My Student Voice surveys. So, um, the first column is students, and then educators, and then parents, um, and then it's split by building. So if you see some zeros there, it's because students, um, in those buildings are not at that grade level, so there would be zero fifth graders participating in the buildings that don't have a grade. Um, so you can see the percentage of student participation is pretty solid, um, until we get to the high school, um, a little bit lower there. And then, um, our educator participation rate is kind of very building to building. And then we can't really get a participation rate on parents, we have parents and guardians because we're not entirely sure of how many parents or guardians are available for each student to get that percentage, but we can show you the actual number of parents who participated. Uh, with this being the first year of administering the survey, um, some of those participation rates are a little bit lower than they might be in the future once we have this more kind of in a well-oiled machine, educators know what the focus of the survey might be, um, as in parents as well.
This is an annual survey?
Yeah, so I think our plan is to, um, give the survey every spring.
The, the challenge might be is our strategic plan, our SOAR, sixth survey, will be next spring, and survey exhaustion is always a concern, and we really use that survey to drive, so having this survey potentially in those springs of those, the two off-years that we're not doing that, well, it's almost a continual spring, uh, feedback survey. And different questions, and that's when we start with the ANCA questions that tie to all three, there's off, there's more than seventeen questions on the survey, but there are seventeen that are asked specifically in all three that they can tie together between students, staff, and parents. There's plenty of other data that is used building level and district level to look at, uh, perception survey, um, for building or degree level, um, or at the school level.
Lindsay, do we have a, maybe, you, I don't know if you want to ask a question as we go through, so you're honest to wait.
Yes.
Did, did, did you have a target that you were looking at or that, uh, the survey folks told you that they generally looked?
For, for participation?
Yes.
As far as a percentage?
Yes.
Um, no, I mean, I, I think a hundred percent.
Yeah.
In a perfect world, right? Um, but no, we didn't set a target participation rate as a district when we administered the surveys.
Statistically speaking, if you can get close to a thirty percent return rate, you can get some pretty good data.
Yeah.
Uh, the challenge is, is with the educators, because educators, you're talking in some buildings, you know, you have a part-time, you have a maybe playground that works two hours a week, they got the survey. And you also have a full-time administrative assistant or building principal or teacher or, so there's, there's somebody that maybe they're different schedule, and so those numbers, I'm not going to say they're inflated, but the number of educators that have access to a device that would get it and use it, in all honesty, there are some that don't check their email, um, that don't have the, they just don't have that much time in the building.
Yeah, that's a great point. When you look at the, like, for example, the ECC, there's a hundred and seven email accounts tied to staff members at the ECC. Um, and Dr. Vanderjack is right, that could be someone who pops in one hour maybe to, you know, to serve lunch, and potentially they're not checking their email from HPS very often. Um, so, yeah, there is, and those, um, numbers are also that unduplicated, so some of our staff members are represented in more than one building, like some of you guys, we were paying home in one building. Um, so it's not a perfect science, but it's, it's pretty close. And we do have five buildings that are at or about the thirty percent threshold too, which gives us the overall search of, um, significant data that we can use.
Do the parents want for household or could two parents in same household for?
As many parents or guardians who are listed at Howard's school.
But only once.
But only once?
One per unit.
Okay.
And I can look at the data from our strategic planning surveys, to what volume, I don't know, we had close to seventeen hundred at one point of parent participation, but again, this is new, so, you know, every time you do this, it's like, oh, you have to get the survey again, it might help increase that, it might, you know, our approach to it might look different. It really depends on the, the, the value of the data out, if it really drives a lot of change, then I think we want to get more and more. If it's more of a, okay, it gives us some feedback to keep going, there's, there's different ways to look at it. We don't want to drive a strategic plan on, on very small percentage of data, but the changes that this survey might, um, causes to make might not be as, as, I'm not saying valuable, but as big as a strategic plan.
Sure, and just, you know, a reminder that this is getting perception data, which is different than some other types of data that the strategic planning survey maybe will be for, this is all about how do you feel about X, Y, and Z. For those of you who are parents and maybe have access to the survey, um, you probably noticed that there's a lot of feeling questions, how do you feel about this, how do you feel about that, but perception, do you how your student is feeling? Um, so I think you're right, I think as we are able to give this more often, we'll increase those numbers.
I did find it somewhat interesting that when you look at some of the questions that dealt with fairness of culture and diversity, the students seemed to be much more positive than their parents and staff, and I thought, no, isn't that interesting? And to dive into that, it's like, is it because they see stuff every day, or is it because their, their expectations are high? But I did see that in some of the questions, and it's like, well, I think that's a good thing, but it would be interesting to know, again, this is perception, right? Not necessarily reality.
And that's, um, another point and a place that we might be able to dive into deeper as an administrative team and kind of find out what is that, like, why is that discrepancy there, what might be the issue with, there's work to be done around that. Yeah, especially when we're able to start personal, um, are there any trends in security levels? So are the positive, kind of positive, most positive affirmations or highest scores attached to our younger students, right? So the change by grade band or transition year, oh, yeah, so I think there's lots to explore. Um, Lindsay and Amy have done all of the have looked around this, we, I'm just kind of tagging along to where we might go with some of this data, is, I mean, anytime we're able to have another view of source to use in building plan, that only helps us have a bigger fuller picture. And, uh, we do appreciate the connectivity to some of our strategic planning goals
And we do appreciate the connectivity to some of our strategic planning holes in the area of aggressive inclusion and belonging, even around fairness and some of our strategic planning goals around discipline and bullying and increasing awareness of all our stakeholders of what goes into those processes. I think there's potential for these to serve as baseline data and potential growth measures, particularly if we're able to increase our participation rates. Knowing that it's an annual measure, you know, it's not going to give striking to them in the pre- post-test, but I think it will be an added measure to give us another layer of perception and overall growth. The other thing that we discussed in the rollout of the survey is that we have had about four years of the mental health survey that started during our COVID year and specific to our secondary students about what had they were experiencing with the feeling of isolation, withdrawal, depression, and other markers that would tell us that they might be a student that may need a little intervention. And so we talked about always wanting to have that balance between assessment and action and not wanting to over-assess our students. But really, I think that this serves as a nice complimentary assessment because the questions are different, but give us a perspective on some more holistic social aspects where the current method of health service survey seems to be a much more individualized. And we have the initiative to have these students share it in a meaningful that survey so that it's more nuanced in terms of how we respond to how each student, you know, what they choose to share in that survey. So we, this is right in April and our mental health survey continues to have a higher participation. I really do think it's about just educating students and educators on the purpose of this assessment and what, how we might continue to facilitate to encourage participation.
So once we get a chance to go through this with our administrative staff in August, then we'll look deeper into the data. And if there are questions about some of the data there, then it could drive conversations from change. Definitely things that we would bring back to the board and say, this is the why that we're having these discussions. There's a lot of data, but it's our first year of doing this. I did have a chance to talk to the person in charge of this survey late this afternoon. After days of trying to get a hold of somebody, we finally got a call back, so. And the challenge is number one, you know, it's hard to compare to Ottawa County. We're Ottawa County, so we can look at our data, because that's it, nobody else gave it. Sagatuck also gave it, but they're really, you look at Elegant and Ottawa, so it'd be different if, you know, Zeeland, Grand Haven, and West Ottawa gave it. Jensen or something, but I did. What'd you say there was?
One hundred and twenty-seven.
One twenty-seven? And there was twenty-two at one twenty-five, right? Because it all started in Kent County, we started this years ago.
Twenty-two, yeah.
And it just took time to get going, then it was kind of a.
But no buy against some of those districts we consider as peer across the state, because there's something there.
I did just hit the list, and I think Amy also hit the list of the people that administered it. I don't know when they administered it, I don't know their participation rates. I did ask about doing comparisons between districts, and they said, we can't release your data and we can't release others' data unless you have an agreement with them. So if you said there's a district that gave it, we'd really like to see how we compare. I can reach out, I'd probably be very successful with some of them. Others might be like, nope, we're using it internally.
I don't know that we want to.
Yeah, I mean, that's asking us to do the same thing. And I think initially for me, it's more of a, hey, let's look at what we're doing. The numbers that you have on the screen are not overly, I don't want to say overly impressive, but there's not like we're, to Lindsay's point, we strive for a hundred percent. Because then you feel if you're giving feedback. But I think if those numbers on a regular basis, if we look at this in two years, maybe three, now we have some trend data, now we can say, okay, what is this doing? I don't see us using this survey to make mass changes on anything. If anything, it's like, let's dive into this a little bit more, and maybe there's a follow-up survey that says, hey, you know what? This is an issue with a certain population, let's see if we can fine tune this. But right now, it's more of a, it helps drive our continuous improvement. It is a requirement when you do district school improvement to have survey to get this information or similar information. We used to do one through the state, I want to say two years ago?
Yeah, well, multiple years ago.
Multiple, yeah, I used to do it through the state, and that survey was underwhelming.
Yes.
This at least gives us something that we do have, and we do have comparable with state numbers. I've just received that today, so we can look and say, how do we compare? If we look at a number and say, this is low, I think you look at seventh grade participation, think at the middle school, well, I have an O that says seventh grade was like seventy percent participation. Is that low? Well, statewide, it was like sixty-eight, so, okay, that's pretty good. High school does dip down, twelfth graders, if you can get thirty percent of your twelfth graders in the spring to complete a survey in a serious fashion, that was a stretch. So we can compare some of those things from a state standpoint, and that's, I think, a good, that this has to start at the state level. And then if we start to dig in and say, hey, this is interesting, then you might make a phone call. Amy could call a colleague in Kent County and say, did you guys notice this too? And they would say, yeah, here's what we're looking at doing, and that's where the professional conversation begins.
Just so I'm clear, unless we ask him in agreement, we're not going to individual districts we can compare to, but we will get statewide.
Yeah, I just received the statewide this afternoon. I had all three minutes to talk to Greg about it and said, and we're going to dive deeper into it before we do anything, before doing anything, yeah.
Yeah, I was like, man, I'm pretty sure we, that was one of the reasons for wanting to do this, is we can have something that compares to. Otherwise, we survey the heck out of people anyway, so that's helpful enough, thanks.
Yeah, I think from our standpoint, we were, the comparison is one thing. I was hoping we could compare it to like districts. We've talked about that before. Here's a group of ten districts, you follow this, if they all give it to this, that's always helpful. But as being so new, I think when you first do it, it's like, okay, let's see where we are. Now, three years from now, our trend data is showing one thing. I wouldn't want to see what Byron Center's doing or Oakhamus or Novi or, gross point, depends on if they administer it or not, or are they administer something similar? We can do that with our YAS survey, our youth assessment survey, because standard, everyone's given it for years, that looks a lot.
Yeah, that's what my thought was on this, is we'd eventually get one. Okay, to start.
Okay, so you know what was sent to us, right Amy?
Pardon?
You know what was sent to us?
The anchor reports.
Yeah, the anchor reports, okay. So, and I didn't realize that this information is probably just as fresh to you guys as it is to us.
Yes, of course.
So when I was talking to Dr. Vanderjagt earlier this afternoon, right before the meeting, I was under the understanding that we were going to get a report on what we're seeing here and maybe some conclusions or initial reactions, but we're nowhere near there right now.
I don't think we're near that, and I think because of some of the talking points we just discussed as far as participation rates in year one, not having any trend data, I think it's a starting place, but I don't anticipate this big lengthy report where here's the goals based on this data. I think it's connected to other data points which add value. And I think that there's opportunity for us with buildings for them to dive into their individual building data and consider some similar things with regard to what's our current state? Does this sound like data that we've had in the past that is similar or there are any outliers? Can we un-hold together a group of students based on this data point to say, tell us more about this and do a little focus group? Those are all things that we'll discuss with administrators in August, but you're right. I don't anticipate because of some of those talking points coming back to this extensive plan about here's how we're going to respond to this data.
I was just going to say, if we do, it's a great conversation to say, here are some ideas that we'd like to, here's why. It goes back to the data, it comes from there. But right now, so, I mean, we could look at one of the questions and say, this is really low. Then you look at the state and say, that's a lot lower, so.
Right, that would be very interesting.
So we're really just scratching the surface with administrative team. I think if you, to Amy's point, if you do this, you know, three, four years, and you've got some trend data, and you've got some movement, you're changing grade level scope and sequence, and all this because of this, then it'll be like, okay, the board wanted to hear the why. Similar to the work we've done with DAC, it took time to get there, and it took us, a lot of it stems from data from years ago, getting to a new.
So my question at this point is, when do we expect to come back to the board with a more in-depth presentation on some conclusions or thoughts? And is that going to be, are we going to do that?
I don't know, it's a good question. I guess it'll all depend on the conversations we have with our administrative team. If there is a lot of aha moments, and we're digging into it at different scopes, and the answer is, yeah, we'd want to bring it back to the board. It all, it's hard to answer that without having to, without having to truly the building experts in the room to say, here's what it means for my building. You could look at a building and say, this makes sense. Another one could look at and say, this is not okay, we need to make some changes. And then the answer is, yeah, we'd want to bring it back to the board.
Yeah, you may, you may decide to fold this into SOR. I mean, I don't, I don't know that there's a specific, okay, we've measured this and we're going to do this. And I think, yeah, I think you do have to digest this, and then the whole thing may be folded into crafting questions around SOR. Or there may be specific things in specific buildings that, oh, okay, that's an interesting one, we'll put it in SOR. Yeah, to me, the point is continuous improvement, collecting more data, as you said, collecting more data, thinking about that data, and how will we do with it, how will we fold it into systems we already have as opposed to creating yet another system where we're taking another survey and measuring it? I mean, it all has to act together, right? And I think that's what I see. And again, the whole larger point is continuous improvement for me, because it would have been easy not to do this survey.
Yes, and we do care deeply about what our students and parents and educators, they can feel about the topics they were asked about. So I don't want to minimize on the flip side of that either, we do deeply care. I just think because of the factors that we or the elements we just discussed about the paper survey, we also don't want to be too reactionary, we want to be very thoughtful about that. And I think that's the opportunity to talk to our building leaders about it.
When you're seeing like a big discrepancy between how parents say do something or their perception and then students and teachers.
Yeah.
There's a couple of them that are very like, oh, that's interesting.
Very interesting to have this conversation. And do we have other data points or questions that have been parallel in strategic plan or in the SEL that tell us something more that we need to be paying attention to?
Yeah, I think it would be very important.
So at this point, my thought is that, and my expectation is that you're going to come back to us with something, and you're going to tell us what you think about what we have in front of us. And then I want to have the discussion for the board to say, okay, perhaps this is what we see from that. Can you explain to us why this is different or why it isn't the same? And I want to stay, I want the board to stay in their lane, and I want the administration to stay in their lane as far as, you know, you coming up with the things that we need to work on. However, there's some things in here, then at first blush, I say to myself, aha. It reinforces what I said eight months ago, okay? But I'm not at the point where I'm going to say that, I said to Dr. Vanderjagt, I want to hear what the administrators have to tell us after you look at it. And then you may come up with the same conclusion that I came up with and then Andrew came up with. And it's kind of where I'm sitting right now.
Can I?
I wouldn't, go ahead, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think that when I'm starting to make connections between what the anchor questions, the data, and SOR, I also made goals, are we, are, process wise, I think that in partnership with other stakeholders, we've already established priorities and creating goals around that. And I almost see this not shifting those priorities or goals, those helping us, are we making progress in that? And so, like, just to create an alignment to say, here's the journey we started around understanding discipline, bullying, and harassment. Here's the action steps we've taken. We had at least three data points, one in three of those schools, and this is kind of a, sort of a complement to it, but it's not over to it. So I would just say, I know that we're going into our third year of the plan. It's what's really interesting to me is where might some of these markers be in your current? To tell us, maybe make, did those action steps that we accomplished with our strategic plan move perception at least around some of those action steps? So I, like, when I, of course, I'm going to put others on, like, the timing of that, but it seems as though, like, in response to this, we almost want to make sure that this is worthy with our other data story manner points, rather than creating story around this alone. So I would anticipate that as we give our SOR five updates in future board meetings, I see the connectedness to that, and so maybe that's something I can help portray to the board as far as, I remember the survey, here's three anchor questions that we gave, and these are going to influence what we're going to be looking for after we do these action steps to see if we make a difference. Because this is only given once a year, so we'll have to wait a year to see if it's made a difference. But I don't know if that adds like a better description of how this could be used, but I wouldn't see this as that's a whole shade in our priorities.
And I would just jump in too, I mean, I don't think it's necessarily negative, and I appreciate how you're describing it. I was actually encouraged by some of the answers, because I think it speaks to a lot of the work that y'all have been doing for the last several years. And we don't have anything to compare to, it's like, okay, so these are across the board, really high positive responses. Like, we should celebrate those things and view those as a win for us, and hopefully they stay really high over time. But yeah, obviously, there's a few that we want to look at, and they're not as high as some of the other ones. And I think that's probably what we're getting to, is yeah, we've got these systems in place, and we just got more data. Well, let's celebrate some wins, obviously, too.
Yeah, a lot of positive information for sure.
Ken, you ready to say something?
No, I just, again, what you said, Miss Thomas, is exactly, I think you're exactly spot on. I would not encourage, and remember, it's the whole board, it's not only the president wants or doesn't want, it's the entire board. And I think what you described, the discernment process, so taking this data, discerning around it at a building level, at a macro level, and then saying, okay, how does this support other systems, other things that we're doing or not supported? And then thinking about that, discerning. And I would, I in fact would encourage not coming back with a report to the board on this. I think the power is in the team's thinking about it, discerning, and then finding those things. If it supports SOR, or it doesn't, or it's counter, or whatever, and then folding it in with the other data that we surveyed and we fold in, and we think about, you know, where we're at, where we're going, and if the data is going to support that, as you said, or if the board is counter to that. So I, that's my opinion, I would encourage us not to.
We might be able to come back to the conversations, maybe summarize the conversations we had as administrative team too. Say, here's some reports that we got, and our interpretation, and there just got an update on some of the conversations that did take place. Everybody's going to have their own opinion on data, we all know that. We live that, oh yeah.
Well, I appreciate you bringing this to us, and at this point, I'm looking forward to what I said earlier. I'd like to have that conversation, and I'm looking forward to that in the next couple of months. And obviously, we'll be talking, you know, inside and outside the building, but thank you very much for putting this together. And Lindsay, thank you for bringing this on, thank you, Jeffrey.
Can I publicly thank Lindsay before she walks out? Lindsay, thanks for your work. So I will say this to the board, can I share your news?
Yes.
So Lindsay has accepted a position as an administrator in Cooperstown. Congratulations. Great news for her, it's horrible news for us. I will say, when your boss, your new boss called me, I made up all sorts of things. He's like, you know, he said, we're looking at Lindsay's recommendation. Oh, I said, oh, thank goodness, the police report just came out.
Oh, thank you very much. I have really enjoyed my time in Hudsonville, and I learned so much. My kids go to school here, this is an amazing place. But I accepted the helm of the council position in Cooperstown, and that's where my heart is really excited to be now too. So I appreciate everything I've learned here and. Yes, I won't change my phone, okay? Thank you all very much.
All right, next up, we have the handbooks. All right, I need you a lot to look at. So here's what happens, when we moved our policy from Yola over to Trune, they provide you with policies, which our policy committee reviewed and the board approved. Great news, we have all the new policies that the board will be getting most likely tomorrow, the board subcommittee most likely tomorrow will approve. Then they give you the guidelines, and then they provide the staff and student handbooks. Staff handbook, and we do not normally take these to the board. You've probably never seen a handbook that the boards have to approve. But I think it's a good idea for the board to see the alignment. They all start with the same template, and so you can see a similar format. This is our first attempt at getting them all to be on the same page, so please. It's going to take time, and I can definitely see us putting these online, and then there's a typo here, there's a tweak here, there's what we're able to do. I can also see us coming back next year to the board and say, all right, here's what we're, it'll be a lot easier to look at. So this is our attempt, the athletic handbook is also different, that is not provided by Trune. So that follows our old athletic handbook, but he has to go through it. He's been at all the meetings, Mr. Park has been at all the meetings, and Armstrong's met with the handbook committee for years. And then the last couple I did with Trune, because to make sure they were using the Trune handbook. So I want to thank our assistant principals, Mr. Verwise at the elementary level. So now there's no longer a Jamestown upper elementary handbook. There's an elementary handbook, and you'll see all the information for Jamestown's in there. So if somebody says, you know, this is the, this is what they do here, this is what they do here, the answer is, no, it's the same handbook. You'll see the same with the middle schools, the five, six buildings unique, and then you see the high school handbook. So I would bring, I'll bring this back to the board in August for approval. We can have as much discussion as it would like tonight, the ch- Uh, we can have as much discussion as like tonight, uh, the challenge about July, as we only have one, uh, board meeting and work session. So we put them together. So this is more of a discussion item. If you have questions about content, if there are specific things you want to say, Doug, can I call you up tomorrow and say, can I run through these questions? If you want to do it now in front of the board, I'm a hundred percent fine with it. That's my sales pitch.
So do they provide context for changes in policy and then do they connect to all of these handbooks? If you have to update a specific policy that's either in the appendix or the handbook itself?
Right, so, um, if they, so the updates that we have for the board to review, starting probably tomorrow, I'm looking at Robin's, I think tomorrow. Um, we've been through them.
Or Wednesday.
Or Wednesday. But then all of those changes in policy, they give you a new handbook where the changes are. So I'll have to go, we'll go through and say, say there are five changes in the handbook that are impacted by policy.
Yes.
Those five changes go to the APs, say, okay, we have to update your handbook. So the handbook could very well be updated in September or October if there's a policy that, and we, what we can't do is have a policy that says one thing in a handbook that says something completely different. So the handbook has to change. And if the policy allows us to do an annual handbook, that's great. But I think, um, in the future, the changes to policies will be done now. But we were in the middle of doing all the policies. When we got the updates, I didn't want to inundate the board with, guess what? Here's another point of new policies we have to update. So we're a little bit behind the game this year, but then next year, we should be able to do this and get this done. But does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Yep. Because that, that obviously is the hardest part, right, of handbooks and policy manuals? That, as we know, when you update one, it ends up infiltrating everything we do. And if Trune is helping to provide some guidance on that, I mean, that's, that's money well paid.
Yeah.
Do that. I, I was very excited to see the consistency of the look and the information contained, and yet very much clearly based on elementary, middle school, high school. Um, so yes, very excited about the work that Trune has done. Obviously, you guys have done as well to put that all together.
Will they all live like the high school one? That's super nice.
No, I don't know. We had discussions on that. So when, I think when that, when we get through and get them finalized, I would say yes, but maybe not till following year.
Okay. So that one looks really sharp. I love the colors and.
Yeah. I do too, but it's, I don't want to, I'm trying to be sensitive to all the work that the rest of the families are doing.
Yes.
They're like, hey, this is great. Why? Can you do it with somebody else? So, yeah. It's a great question. I think we, I think the years will get there, even if we have to take it over and, because it's a header thing. But you want the headers to have the right, they want to be indexed right so that you can look at the table of contents and I think that, because that's a dynamic thing. So when you put it online, you click on the table of contents, it goes to the section, which helps your, your community and your students and athletes out.
And I see, wasn't just recently that the MAS B endorsed and encouraged school districts to go for the Trune?
That's correct.
So ahead of the curve there.
Will there be consistency with dress code, um, school to school to school? No.
Oh, I thought, no, parent to parent, parent.
Great level. There should be a great level that's addressed.
There are, there are in great levels. We had a long discussion about that. Um, but the answer is, that's a challenging one. I know we discussed it as a board. We discussed it lengthly, our administrative team. I think the, I think the expectation will always be there. I think the actual language in there would probably be what is, follows the board policy.
Oh, because it's, it was just different in each of the books. And so I just was wondering if that was intentional, like some talked about straps, some talked about covering a torso, some were on cover torso. Okay.
It was intentional.
Okay.
But all of them do follow the board, uh, policy. And that's actually the board policy we tweaked by using language from the handbook and in the policy together. Because that was worded, uh, they thought very clear and they decided, yeah, put a policy.
We may have covered this, Miss, but let's speak to the process again, what you worked through.
Yeah, so we, uh, there was a template that Trune gives you, and they highlight every section that you can edit. And you have part of that, you have one of those documents for each one. You can see where there's some highlight areas. You can see what they, what was crossed off, what was added, what was in the handbook. So they, each grade level got their handbook, and then they went through them, gave them a couple weeks to do that. They, we came back and back. We talked about a lot of these questions and looked at what, as Simon said, what is it? Where, you know, where we're going to do this policy, this, where's this impact? Uh, cell phone policies, other conversations we spent a lot of time on, um, and went through there. So then we took it, and then we said, okay, here's the changes they can make, and they made those changes. Then there's some that were district wide, five, four coordinator, title nine, all of that stuff we put in there. They put their daily schedule, their welcome back, all of that stuff, personalized them. And then on our end of this office, we cleaned them up, so they have the marked up copy and what would be considered a bot copy.
So principals were the points for the grade levels? Who were the grade levels?
I'm sorry. It was Jeremy Verwies at the elementary level. It was, uh, Mr. Wazinski, uh, and Mr. McDowell at the middle school level, Mrs. Sordeski at five, six, and then all the UPs.
So the team was identified and executed the process you just talked about?
That's correct.
Thank you.
It was all the UPs at the base quick.
Is there still a fair amount of work to be done though, like cleaning them up? Because there's a couple of repeated pages, repeated sections, things like that.
Yes, there is. But I, I wanted to get into you is because I knew how lengthy it was. I wanted to get to you.
It's great.
With summer schedules and I, I asked them not to come tonight. I guess the only one that's here is Mr. Kessel. Do you have any questions for our new AP? Uh, Dr. Kessel, sorry. So, uh, but I mean, from that standpoint, um, once we go through, if the, if the board says, yeah, now it's really trying to find. And I can imagine, I'm going to say this, we're probably going to have some duplicate things in there when we first put it out. Somebody's going to say, what? And then we'll fix it. And we both, that's the nice thing about not having to put them all online when you, when you do have a spacing issue or. Uh, we have a lot of bot issues.
Yes.
So we're, we like to, and you can't just like replace because then what it does is it changes, then your index, your table of contents is gone. You have to do that all over again. So, um, we'll get there, but yeah.
I'll shoot you a couple of things as well.
Please, because I know it's going to take, and even, and even if you want to come in today, I'm, I have no problem with that. Because there's some that I've looked at it so many times, and Armstrong has, and if you look at it so many times, you're like, okay, so.
I like the consistency.
And you, 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 you okay with that? Let me know. I mean, the whole, we're all just, you're okay. So I do think it goes a long ways if, you know, a lot of times as a administrator, you might have a parent say, if that policy, and the entry might be, it's not policy, but it is in a board approved handbook. Um, and that goes, that Doug has seen, he's good. So we will be asking the board if you'll approve these as the student handbooks and the athletic handbook. Um, we did not put the athletic handbook in every student handbook, but it's separate and it's identified as its own, you know? Yeah, I think that's it. I think a great job. This, this whole process, this whole year is going to set us up for success, rather than not. It might take a whole, it might take another year, but we're getting closer. We can see the summit. It's great.
Any other questions or any other discussion out there? Okay, anything else on the student handbook spectrum?
That's it.
Okay. Now we go to the report items from the superintendent.
I just have a couple of quick report items. So I was going to congratulate Lindsay, but I know she might need, so I just did that. Um, Park Elementary, the construction's coming along nicely. That's going to be ready to go, um, start of school, the parking lot. Um, it just tied in last week. If you knew Park Elementary was closed for a little bit, but they tied that in. So it should be good to go. Parking lot on the parent drop up, it's going to be last minute, even that done. So if worst case scenario, we reroute. It's nice weather in August, so that should be fun. We'll figure that out. It won't be snowing, I know that. So we'll figure that out from a parking standpoint. The interior is great. Ethan's done an amazing job as the CM over there with construction. He's done a really nice job. The, uh, the video display system at the stadium has been sold. Uh, there's still being in the lettering that is a pre-lit Eagles, uh, Eagle Stadium that goes on top of the whole thing. That's pre-lit. They hope to have the power, uh, up and running on there probably Wednesday or this week. Training will be next week. Um, I'm going to steal a little bit of Ann. Mrs. Armstrong's thunder, and Mrs. Taylor, Mr. Beal. Um, we've been working to try to hire a production, what's the, what's the term? Production, production manager, which is a part-time teacher and facilitator of, of a lot of the productions that take place. Working alongside Pete Blair and what that looks like. They've become a rock star. Um, and they landed the plane today. So, um, we'll go through, we'll go through that more in August. Um, but the preparation for, um, welcome back, opening day, uh, first games, all these highlight things, um, it's exciting. First thing, my son asked me, could I apply for that? I'm like, no, you're still in school. So yeah, besides that, you know, it's, it's July. Um, our administrative team reports two weeks from today. We have our retreat. We say our retreat, but we're in this room. Um, way out of town to, so we have our retreat coming up. Uh, the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday of that week, we've got a really, a, a great agenda. We'll be sharing that with the board once we get everything kind of fine tuned. But I want to thank the, the staff to the right. Um, you talk about poor people that it's the middle of July and putting in the time and effort to still make sure that, um, this ship gets on board. Um, they work hard and, um, it's just fun to work alongside these people. So that's actually ready for, not for kids next week, but these guys are ready, right?
May, do you have anything you'd like to bring up?
Yeah, I would just say that all the hires are exciting, especially Kaylee, because she's held our last special education certification opening. So super excited about that. She did, I did. And all of the congrats, kudos, Miss Angie. She recruited so well, and she's so good in her job. Her whole team represented all the job fair. So, um, really excited about that, especially when, um, towns around town are seeing how many days are left before school starts and how to stay positioned. So I feel really lucky about that. Uh, we do continue to have long-term staff positions open from this hall. We're going to get them released. So once that's solidified, we'll be back in a while.
Excellent. Thank you, May.
Yeah, welcome to the new staff. I'm excited to get to know each of you more during new teacher orientation. And Mr. Kessel, congratulations to you as well. Uh, I think you likely saw in Dr. Vanderjack's board brief, but summer school and summer supports is in full swing. A hundred and sixty-seven students face to face, um, a full-on school happening in summer for first grade through ninth grade students. Fifty-one students participating in credit recovery, which is excellent. And then we have around a hundred and fifteen students who participated in some of the online resources that we, um, provide as an offering for families who want to keep their kids engaged over the summer. So, um, feel really proud about that work. Those are, those are heavy lift programs, um, both, uh, from a management perspective, from a trying to design program that's sustainable, uh, both financially as well as just the, the common resources. Also, a, a significant amount of work has gone into the design of what we are doing with students. We are, we'll be tracking data for the first time and building those systems to track data. So hopefully we can come to the board like we do each year with, um, kind of a, a report out of progress. Certainly in summer school, you're hoping, um, in for first grade through ninth grade students that you are, um, making gains. But you also, there is value in just not going backwards. And so, um, we'll see what our data looks like, and I'm excited to be recording that data for the first time in meaningful ways and due to the, the way that our program is designed. So looking forward to that.
Uh, just again, congrats to everybody. And I, I love May's optimism and her kind, kind words. But, um, you know, you just never know what is going to happen. But I do know that we already have some great new staff that will be bringing to you in August. And then you'll get to meet them, um, at the new staff as well. We have some counselors. Um, we just had some, uh, retirement and resignations this week, so, or, you know, late last week. So we'll, you know, keep on truckin'. So I would just like to, you know, thank you, Dr. Vanderjack, for your kind words for us. I'd really like to acknowledge the people that work at this building as well, um, you know, between finance and HR and curriculum and social, uh, student services. There's a lot going on right now that, uh, is getting everything set for our students to come back and even our principals to come back in two weeks. Oh man, they're the, they're the most work. So, um, just, it, it's just been great. And you can really tell that we've been a team that's been together for a while now because it's almost like, oh no, I already did that. Oh, I got that done. And it just feels so good. I think this is the first summer, in all honesty, for six years that I feel like I'm breathing a little. So I just really appreciate everybody and the team here and so on.
Hey, we don't have time to. See, I'm, they're always saying, giving accolades to you. I want to thank you three for all the work that you do. Okay, go ahead.
All right, so, uh, the audit, as Ann spoke about, as far as the busyness in, uh, in the office, the, I'd say the business office, finance group is asking a lot of everybody's staff for stuff for the auditors. Audit begins August eleventh. Um, the, just a couple of other construction notes. The storage facility, storage shed in the high school has come along nicely, finally. Um, we had to get, we had to work through some permitting issues. Um, the building inspector, fire inspector is scheduled for the same day right now for the, for August sixth on Park. Um, furniture is going to begin the twenty-ninth. Uh, most of the work on the furniture installs is going to be the week of August fourth. Uh, asphalt is scheduled somewhere in the, in the week of August fourth. So there's going to be details, as Dr. Vanderjack said, details about that parking lot. But, uh, it's kind of the other, this is one of those things that we first looked at this one, remember? This was the summer. Last summer was tough tearing the middle hallway out and replacing it. But this summer was always going to be, and I think that was one of the, the, you really see the benefit of OAK this summer. I mean, they just have planned and planned and planned and, but along with the staff at, at Park, uh, at Park. They, they've been flexible. We moved, uh, some of the lower L out, uh, May first to move it in some of the, the, the center, categorical classrooms. The lower L would have been there to give us a jump start. So, um, yeah, there's a lot going on over there at Park, but it's, it's happening. And, uh, we're really thankful for the great team we have and just reflects what it still is. So go ahead.
Nick?
Welcome. Uh, really excited, uh, to have you, uh, as new staff here at Eagles. And Ann, thank you for your hard work. Uh, and I know it's difficult, and I really appreciate getting the resumes. It's fun. I feel like we know more about you. I mean, it's a, really fun to see. So really excited. Dr. Kessel, our whole family's super excited to, uh, have your, your new position. Well, well deserved. Uh, yeah, just thank you, all of you at this table. No, it's, uh, you don't get a summer like some other staff do. So appreciate all that you do. Andrew, I want to sow your thunder, but thank you for taking care of our daughter the last three weeks. Making home safe. I guess it got a little wet there at the end, but, uh, Kayla had a great time on summer science. Appreciate all of you and Mr. Bolt, and your wives, and your boys, you and your kids.
Probably more important than your wives.
Yeah, mom beat, I guess.
A mom for a long time. Some size, that's for sure, for that. Exciting for you guys to join us. It's, it's great to see some friendly faces, see resumes with your familiar names, and yet knowing that your skill levels, I'm sure, have been increased by your college experience as well. So welcome. It's great to see you guys. Um, maybe either Doug or Pat can give us a little bit of an update, probably not any more than what we have, on where we stand at the state and federal level with the budgets, money that we need to keep the schools open. And if you haven't written or emailed your legislators yet, please do so. Um, this was something they had promised years ago, that they would always have a budget in place by July first at the state level. And now in conjunction with what's happening in the Trump administration at the federal level and the uncertainty, it's really not fair to our students. Um, and so know that, you know, I think most of our board members are paying attention to that as well. But I hope all the other people in the district are paying attention and voice their opinion on that. Because if we don't know for sure what we're going to get, how are we going to know for sure how we're going to pay our staff? How are we going to send kids on the bus, et cetera? So in the midst of these great things, I hate to be the downer, but, um, it's the reality that the people here at the table are going to have to deal with if things aren't taken care of. So.
The only update I can provide is there's no update from a state standpoint. If they come back together before August fourteenth, people will be surprised, um, if they get the volume involved. Uh, the federal level, the issue with part of a lawsuit that filed for the release of the title funds. And we're, we got notification on Thursday of last week that they anticipate that we'll get released. It's a small number. I think it's a hundred and forty-four thousand per us, but it's a number. It's more of a principal viewpoint. So we'll keep you posted if anything happens, but as we talked about July, um, there's not a lot of attendance. It's hard to vote. We know these are.
Anything else to add to that?
Yeah, that's good. They, they. Yeah, that's just it. They, the, the promise is that it's gonna be done before, for, you know, we have to have our budget done. On a number that's, they're supposed to, uh, just give us some, some good targets. But, uh, the, with the piece that Hudsonville's been working hard to, um, I mean, the, the restructure that happened last year, I, I would say that's more important. I mean, a lot of my colleagues in, in my position, that their, their district didn't do that. So they didn't do that redesign after COVID. So I think Hudsonville's done what Hudsonville can do and we just have to feel that we're, you know, have it wait. I mean, that's, that's like, that's like an offer.
And thankfully, again, our, our fund balance, um, is, is a decent number. But again, our, just like everyone else has to do their job, they need to do their job too, so.
Welcome to our new teachers. We are very, very happy to have you. It's, it's a wonderful district. We'll be very happy here, hopefully. Uh, Dr. Vanderjagt, thank you very much for sending all the, um, student handbooks early.
Wasn't that early. I wanted to send a later, later version.
It was better than on a Friday evening, so thank you for that. And we were talking about the budget and I just wanted to thank the team over here because, you know, here tonight, we're, we're, we are welcoming, I think, eight new teachers. We talked about hiring a, a part-time manager. We were talking about that production manager. And yet I was just reading in the Grand Rapids Press how the district is laying off. And you do such a good job managing our resource structure, Vanderjagt. You've had such a good job managing and making sure that we are viable and that we are positioned well and that we are not at a point where we are laying off right now. So thank you.
You guys are good. You can go back and, all right. Yeah, I just wanted to say welcome as well to the teachers. Happy to have you. So we've been building already and looking forward to having you continue to be in our buildings. Thank you all, Dr. Vanderjagt and team, for all the great work you're doing. And Nick is right, we, we, um, arrived home from summer science on Thursday morning. We cut it short by a day because we had, there was snow in the mountains and highs in the low forties and wind chills and things like that, so. So we, safety is our number one priority. So, um, you know, the, the cool thing about that is like, in every, every little decision that we make as leaders of that group, like there, it's life, right? Like, we're making decisions about where we're gonna go home and where we're gonna stay and making reservations at alternate campgrounds and all that kind of thing. And there's little nuggets of, of learning in all of those things and it was just cool to see. But wonderful group of kids. Um, they went with the flow, they were totally understanding, but also, and most importantly, they learned from it. And, uh, it's a physical thing to be a father. So thank, thank my fellow board members for all the support and Dr. Vanderjagt for your support. It's, um, it's certainly a life-changing experience, not only for the kids, but for, for my little ones too, so it's good.
And how was the new bus?
Well, this is our second year on the bus with A C and we did use it a little more this year than we did last year on the way out. It was, um, it was hot going across the, you know, the flipping states, but, uh, yeah, we're great, everything.
And no breakdowns, that's the point.
No breakdowns, everything was, was perfect, so it was good.
Great to have that, great to have that. Welcome, everybody. Congratulations, Dr. Kessel. It's great to have everybody on the team. Continuing our journey toward excellence here. Again, we keep saying that, but we can't say it enough. Thank you all of you for what you do during the summer. And please, um, um, extend congratulations to Jeff Mucker, who is a certification as chief technical officer. Not a, not a small endeavor or a small accomplishment, so congratulations to him as well. That's it.
I feel like everyone has said what I would say, welcome, congratulations. Thank you. I can't believe the summer's on this summer.
Well, I'd like to thank all of you for coming today. I'd like to thank all of you for staying. For those people who are leaving our district, they just leave the, um, you have decided to stay, so. Anyway, and also, as been mentioned before, we have an outstanding finance staff and they always make sure we get paid, so. So, uh, anyways, with that said, we're going to ask to give a motion to adjourn.
So.
Andy?
Support.
Second.
Support.
Don? Fellas in favor?
Aye.
And we vote? Thank you very much.